I'm now going to call the emergency September third, two thousand and twenty five meeting of the Norfolk County Commission to order. I'm going to read the executive order on remote participation on Thursday, on March twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty five, Governor Healy signed into law House Bill sixty two, an act relative to certain COVID nineteen measures adopted during a state of emergency, which includes a two year extension, the option for public bodies to hold remote meetings by suspending certain provisions of the Mass Open Meeting Law, Mass General Law, Chapter thirty A, Sections eighteen through twenty five. That action was effective immediately extending the current option for remote meetings through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty seven. Thank you if you could all join meetings.
My pleasure. United States of America. To the public, what's the status? What nation under our individual liberty just as well.
Thank you. All call vote, Commissioner Stady.
I am present, sir.
Commissioner Collins.
Present.
Commissioner Shea is present. No executive session today. Number four minutes of the regular session meeting of August twenty seventh and the executive session meeting held on August thirteenth. Both for your.
Uh, I had a concern on one minute.
Okay.
Yeah, I did. I didn't get just afford that to you, but there were a couple of I thought it was a typo or something different. Can we, uh, the minutes of, um, August thirteenth, I move for approval.
To be held.
There's the executive session will be held.
Alright, August thirteenth minutes seconded.
Yeah.
Yeah, to be held until such time as the chair said.
Right.
All in favor?
Aye.
No way, what's your concern on this, my son? We can hold it.
On this one, it was only a couple of things. So it's just a couple of minor things. And of course, I don't have a minute in front of me, so I can't point those out here, but they were just some minor uh, things I thought should be corrected. I see it. Yeah, I'd be glad to. Yep. So, um, new concession. I think there was something I said. We sure really failed. We'll let it go. We'll let it go. We're fine. Alright, we'll let it go. We'll move approval.
Approval of the August twenty seventh, twenty twenty five regular session meeting minutes?
Yep.
Motion made and seconded on the August twenty seventh. All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. Number five. Appointments. One P M. Report from the Ways and Measures Division, William Mullin and William Buckley, Assistant County Director.
That one makes our fall sponsor better. Nice.
Gentlemen. Commissioner, so are you?
You're good. Thank you, Bill.
Free handout. Okay. Pleasure to be here.
Good afternoon.
Afternoon. This is my second annual report, I suppose, with you gentlemen. Um, briefly, uh, as you know, I believe the Ways and Measures Program is going quite well. Um, a couple of highlights, I suppose, is, um, we've added, as you know, a deputy sealer, uh, hired in October twenty fourth, Gregory Passano. He, um, successfully passed both his written and field exams and was, um, designated as a deputy county sealer on May fifteenth of this year. Um, we are expanding. As you know, we're flat close to, um, to having Denham with us. Forward to that. Um, as a result of that, thanks to your generosity, we've acquired a second vehicle, which is the, uh, two thousand and twenty five Ford Maverick, which is working out quite well. Um, actually getting a cap put on that, I believe tomorrow. And then it's down to municipal graphics lettering, and that's no emergency lighting. Um, so just as a quick overview, what we've done is, uh, what I've done and my team. Um, we've submitted the annual reports to the State Division of Standards on behalf of all the towns. Um, we've done over fifty gas stations, which is like seven hundred and eighty five meters. Um, hundred and fifty two small scales, four hundred and twenty one, what we consider regular scales. Um, a hundred and thirty larger scales from a thousand to a hundred and twenty thousand pound capacity. Um, thirty oil trucks, thirty two price scanner verifications. And we've investigated and resolved nine consumer complaints. So if I was here. Um, moving forward, we're looking to add towns such as Dover to our service area. And we're working with the towns to kind of implement a one county, one price model for uniform inspection fees. Trying to get everyone on board. And some of the fees have not been addressed since I think of Ron Reagan's presidency, so.
It's a while. Yeah. Rent them told us the other day they didn't even know if they had fees. And I looked back in the the eighties, I think is the last time they looked at.
What was it? Oil trucks?
For, for any, just regular fees. We don't know if we can charge people. We don't even know what we have.
I mean, it's crazy when you think about it. We'll go out to a test a pharmacy. So we drive out there. We have time. We have a kit that costs over eighteen hundred dollars and it costs three dollars to test the test scale. Like that's what the towns, like three boxes. Yeah. We can't even issue an invoice for three dollars.
But you have to wait for them to adjust the fee.
Yeah, correct.
I mean, they have to be responsible, so.
Correct.
You can suggest it, but you can't.
Luckily, all the air communities in our service area, we have the community Canton and the community of Medway, who both have the area relatively high fees. So all the other communities are pointing to those two sort of bookends to say, well, you know, Ken's charging twenty five dollars for the scale and we're charging five. That's all. So what we've done, which is sort of a recruitment tool as well for communities like Milis and and other places who, um, need to do that fee study. We're doing free fee studies for them. We're giving them all the information. They know where they are as compared to all their peers and basically in a package so that their staff can can reach out to their boards, uh, for trying to make working with us as revenue neutral as possible for the communities and a benefit. So, um, you have on your agenda, the I M A with Denham. It's just, uh, we haven't received it back yet. They just were tweaking a few bits of wording, so we'll put that on a successive agenda. But but Denham is almost completely ready to begin services. And now we're focused on Dover, Norfolk and Plainville, which are three towns. So the state does. Dover and Norfolk are very small in scale, but I I think we, for the meeting we had with the state a few now about six months ago, it makes more sense for us to do it than for, uh, folks, uh, for the standards. So that would make nine by the end of the calendar year, which is our goal, which is a pretty large part of the county in two and a half years. So we're excited.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Any questions, gentlemen?
Nice job. Think it's probably going to be the biggest now or is Devon going to be the biggest now?
They're about the same. They're, they're, they're about the same. Looking at, you know, the number of gas stations, number of, um, stores, uh, that actually have it. Denham will be rivaling Rentham in terms of price verification inspections, which are every two years.
Mm hmm.
But, um, terms of scales and gas stations, they're kind of average.
Denham has way more, uh, gas trucks.
Yeah.
Oil.
I noticed, I noticed I come, I come the back way and go through, got just a high block and I come down. What, what street is that? High Street is a big fuel oil company over there. Maybe to Danny, I could be wrong, but that is going to be.
Press the stop button, yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Chairman.
Questions, Commissioner?
With the chair, um, based upon the possibility of expanding to maybe up to nine towns. Do you feel you have the capacity to handle that? Or do you
Currently, we do.
Looking for more people or?
Not yet.
At the moment, you seem to be okay.
Correct.
Okay. Fall ahead. Great job. Thank you.
We also serve as sort of backup. I know the communities of Wellsley and Sharon have sealers who are closer to retirement and that they've, they've signaled to us that we are their contingency. So they, they're not looking at other options.
Oh, well, no.
Uh, we're working closely. I wear my blue and, uh, yellow, no, a tie from my previous, uh, my previous employment. Rep Rogers made me buy so many of them.
I bet mine, that's it.
Nor is being currently served by a retired employee.
That's right.
Who, um, enjoys doing it, but that may change. And we've, I'm impressed with lobbying our friends in Northern to ensure that we scoop them up much like in, and Needham and Denham. They're the closest to the county.
Yeah.
Uh, complex. So we, uh, it's easiest for our staff to.
Very good.
Excellent.
Alright.
Thank you.
Okay.
Good work.
Alright. Double quote.
Thanks, guys.
That's number five. Number six. Public comment. Each week we have a section on our agenda for public comment. People can come in and visit and comment or people out in Zoneway can comment. So now is the time if anyone has any public comment. Director, did you get?
Mr. Chairman, I have to apologize. It just triggered my comment, and it was important, uh, on the minutes. It had to do with, with the way it was explained in the minutes. The minute said there was no public comment, which almost looks like we didn't have it. And instead, I should have.
You want to phrase it?
Wanted to phrase it just to say, not to be picking any, but we always have public comment. But the way it was written was there was no public comment. I think I should have just rephrased, there were no public comments. That to me, something like that.
So do you want to amend your vote?
Yeah, could I? Tech that, that was, that triggered. And I knew a son of a public comment. She said, there was no public.
Okay, so we're going to go back to number two.
Right. I could.
Number four minutes.
Thank you.
Regular session meeting of August twenty seventh.
Right. Right. I'd move amend, amend the minutes, just with the, the so-called amendment of the statement. There was no public comment to read. There were no public comments at the meeting.
Uh, I'll second the revised, um, um, motion.
Okay, on the revised approval of the August twenty seventh minutes, will they will it change relative to public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll make that correction.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're back on the record here. Public comment. Last call. Seeing none, we'll go to number seven. All business. We have none. And we're eight personnel matters for consideration. Commissioner Stady.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, who's the former to Norfolk County Agricultural High School. Uh, first move approval of the resignation of Marion Waterson as an instructor, uh, effective date eight, one, twenty five. So moved.
Well, same.
I think her name is Mariah.
Oh, Mariah. Forgive me. Forgive me. Mariah.
Okay, all in favor?
You are correct.
Isabel.
Sex, I move the notice resignation of Arlene Peterson as a special ed, uh, procedural assistant at the rate stated effective date eight, five, twenty five. So moved.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Isabel, next.
At registry of deeds.
Uh, yes.
Note, remove approval and notice retirement of Edward Wheeler as second assistant to registry of deeds at the rate stated effective date nine, five, twenty five. So moved.
Same. Um, yeah, yeah, that's right. Yeah, second.
Commissioner, motion made and seconded on retirement, Edward Wheeler, all in favor?
Aye.
Isabel, next.
And another move approval of the notice for address change for Jennifer Miller as the non union head clerk at the rate stated effective date of the address change three, twenty four, twenty five. So moved.
Same.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Maintenance.
Maintenance, we have two. I move approval and notice for regrade for James Bradbury as the night roving utility worker, the rate stated effective date eight, twenty five, twenty five. So moved.
Uh, same.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Isabel, next.
And.
Day roving worker.
Change.
Yeah, that, you can just say it for the changed rate.
Okay, yes, sir. I'll move approval and notice for regrade for Daniel Petrie as a day roving utility worker with the rate change stated and has amended here effective date eight, twenty five, twenty five. So moved.
Same.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Isabel.
That's it for, uh.
Next for, uh, that's it for personnel matters. Number nine payroll and expense warrants for approvals.
Don't have those. I'd like to move on. Yeah, Buckby.
We'll go with, okay. We had brief, let's see.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move the following for approval on the warrant list of nine, three, twenty five.
Mm hmm.
First item, approval of twenty six, that's nine payroll of the county, the sum one hundred and fifty three thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars, sixty three cents. So moved.
Same.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Isabel, next.
Second move approval of twenty six, that's nine, five, payroll of the school, the sum three hundred and eighty one thousand, seventy three dollars, fifty three cents. So moved.
Same.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye. Third, approval of line oh, oh, nine, oh, one, twenty six, the expense of the county, the sum five hundred and seventy thousand, six hundred and thirty five dollars, one cent. So moved.
Same.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Isabel.
Next, move approval of line item twenty six, oh, three, the expense of the school, the sum one hundred and seventeen thousand, eight hundred and eighty nine dollars, ninety six cents. So moved.
Same.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Isabel.
And finally, uh, Wallford Recreational Facility credit card payment for nine, two, twenty five, approval fifty two thousand, nine hundred and eighty six dollars. So moved.
Same.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye. That concludes the warrant.
Thank you. Number ten, Department Head Presentation of Fiscal twenty six first supplemental budget requests and transfers. I'm going to open it up by asking Director Coleman briefly an explanation, then we'll go to the register deeds first and then the skills second.
Thank you.
Is there, is there another, is the maintenance coming? The final one coming?
Uh, no.
Okay.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Shea. Uh, yes, commissioners this afternoon. Uh, as we begin, uh, the process of building the FY twenty six first supplemental budget request and transfers, department has welcomed in to express their, uh, request to the commissioners, ask any questions. No votes are expected this week. Uh, a week from today, I will summarize, um, collective requests and give them forth to you for consideration. Um, so and today is the opportunity to talk directly with you and, uh, by your standpoint, I'll sit back around. Reg, excuse me.
Reg, so you all set?
Yeah, I'll defer to the new guy.
Jeremy? Okay, Jeremy.
Sure. Oh, I'm not planning on presenting anything. I've got two very minors. It's just.
Okay.
I've given those to Phil already.
Okay, just came by to say hi. Yeah. Yeah.
I got lost. I was down here.
They ain't gone. Good to see you. Which the meeting is next week, right?
Yeah.
Yes. See you then.
Grace to come here.
Now you're up.
Hey. Me? Try to avoid. Like, you know, it wasn't a boy anymore. Pleasure to be here. Uh, actually, on, on this, I, I had sought advice. There was an email that came over from the assistant director and, and I, you know, had reached out seeking some advice. I know Commissioner Stady, you communicated last night. So the first thing this morning, I emailed a, a letter, but, you know, knowing how emails are, not everyone.
I got it.
Oh, you did. Okay. I'll take it and just bring the.
Thank you.
The letter over.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, so, uh, in essence, that letter, uh, it, it touched upon, um, in the communication, uh, Commissioner Stady was, you know, regarding the old supplemental request and that, you know, you know, without reading the letter in full, that was really for the union employees. And, um, since that request, and that was back on July twenty eighth, you know, uh, it's my understanding the union has been all taken care of, which is great. And it was my understanding that three percent cost of living allowance, uh, for all the union employees have been considered by you and funded as well. So, so really, that request is kind of moved, you know, you guys took care of it. Uh, but as you can see in this letter, uh, the second paragraph, it says, thus accordingly, the registry request at this time relative to supplemental or relative to what we're doing and hopefully for the, um, advisory board is to extend the three percent cost of living allowance. Uh, again, I'll only speak to the registry, to all registry employees, you know, the, the eleven non-union registry deeds employees. In extending this allowance, uh, will have a cost amount of under thirty four thousand. The exact amount is thirty three thousand, ninety seven dollars and ninety two cents. So I guess I'm just here, you know, to, to give my priority, which is that, that all, all the registry workers be compensated, uh, and, and that was my request. And I guess my question to each of you is, uh, you know, one part of the registry team, which was the union workers, and they got paid. And in the interest of fairness, uh, which has always been the case here, uh, relative to salaries, when is the other part of the registry team working going to get paid? And we got the email. I didn't know what the gist of it. That's why I was reaching out was, you know, I didn't want silence to be deemed that, uh, you know, uh, all the employees deserve pay and should get paid. So I don't know if anyone has any questions or anything.
Questions?
Well, I think that's, uh, we intend to act on all people in the county.
Well, it's under, sure, it's under consideration.
Uh, yeah, it's, um.
I mean, we have one holdout.
Right.
And we were hoping to bring them aboard before, but it appears to tingle on arbitration. So, like, we'll probably bring out the three percent up before their arbitration is done. So.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
It'll be done in a timely manner.
Yeah. Oh, alright, because I, I I mean, you people make the decisions, but I certainly have um, some feelings on, you know, the union that's holding it up is a four person union and
Right.
By my math, there's forty five non-union employees when you consider the county. Uh, I think, I think out of that forty five, we have eleven and the county has thirty four. So, um, you know, you're going to just, just juggle fairness, but
Right.
Some of the fairness, I think, should be, you know, should four people hold up forty five. I, I'll, I'll speak for the registry, but there's forty five non-union people, um, considering all the departments. So.
I can appreciate you, uh, looking out for the people in your department, and that's your job, right? Your department head. On our side, we're trying to also utilize what we can to get
Right.
All the contracts lined up. And I was going to, I couldn't really convey to you yesterday, I was going to say, that's where we're at. But this, I don't think there's any intention to neglect any. It's just a matter of timing. That's all.
Well, you know, Commissioner Collins, we probably remember there was a similar circumstance with myself and Commissioner Gillis. And there's different approaches on how to handle that one. If anyone's interested, we can, they talk later, but the other way you can look at it in response is, again, I'm not going to speak for the maintenance union. I know they've settled in the maintenance department, but I'll speak for the registry. The registry union has settled.
Right.
So the people that manage the registry, it's one theme that should be done.
Yep.
Done. Alright, so I appreciate that.
I do. But that's just on that particular right, right? Does that have to be formally voted to transfer the money and something?
Well, no, I mean, non-union people.
No, here, the, you know, Director, uh, Mr. O'Donnell is saying in his letter, do we have to take any kind of action on that next week? The all these supplementals would all be part of the Yes. Process next week, right?
Next week, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright.
It'll be there.
Yeah. Alright. Thanks for making that pitch. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Alright.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Marguerite.
Thank you.
All stuff for that next week, uh, event, yeah? The don't say the governor's coming.
Come on over. Yeah, yeah.
Good. Alright, take care. Thank you.
I didn't want to bring it up, but I suppose I am now. That makes me think of the school.
Yeah.
Makes me think of the school and how we're doing our negotiations since you're here.
I can, I can prove to you that, uh, the teachers union and the support staff unions have both ratified their contract. Their contract. So, uh, we're working on getting an executive summary before the trustees and commissioners for the meeting on the eleventh. Okay, so we're hoping to have it upgraded for about that.
Okay, well, that'll be helpful because you're a big chunk of this too.
Yeah.
Off the top of your head, do you know how many non-union employees you have now with the new union?
Uh, we have only about down. Maybe nine, ten, something.
Not partly, other than second.
It went from forty to ten.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. And all, all but one of those has a contract.
Alright. Okay. Alright, well, that'll be nice. And then we'll be down to one group. They go to, they go to arbitration. Did they go? Did they file for?
Oh, well, you have the date on that.
Okay. Okay.
There are the lead here.
No, that's all right. Okay, that was quick.
Thank you. John, I gave you my agenda.
Number eleven, we're going to table.
Yeah. You want to turn it back.
Number eleven is the, uh,
Thank you.
I'm away about bringing town and denim on for rates and measures, not quite ready. So we'll table that. We have a motion table number eleven. Thank you.
Motion table, yeah.
Second.
Number twelve procurement department report on bid openings and contact awards. We have none this month, this month, this day, this week. And twelve, thirteen, report of the county director.
Mr. Chairman, a few items. Just a reminder, um, a week from today, I'll bring before you a summarized request for the first supplemental for FY twenty six transfers supplemental on capital needs. Um, broadly speaking, I think I've indicated to the commissioners that due to some favorability with some revenue, um, we do project a capital budget in FY twenty six. Um, in addition to the supplemental, we'll also, of course, do our conventionary, uh, transfers. Um, and then finally, as the commissioners may recall, upon the receipt of the so-called Quincy money, we establish a capital fund, um, into which capital funds are deposited and withdrawn. Um, you'll be seeing a request to fund certain court related expenses only from that particular account. Um, as I mentioned to you before, I believe it is my FY twenty six budget close presentation back in the spring, I strongly encourage the commissioners to use that account exclusively for court related expenses, because what we spend, we get reimbursed for, and money goes right back in to that fund to you. So, um, you'll see a more comprehensive review of what that entails, um, next Wednesday. Um, following next Wednesday on the seventeenth, we'll have our first advisory board meeting at the agricultural school. It'll be, um, it'll, you know, we will have a finance committee meeting, I believe it's in five or five thirty prior to that. So, um, pretty much the same script that we've had for the last years. Um, Commissioner State, uh, Shea just mentioned, uh, one union is the Engineers Union. Uh, we are slated to, um, meet with an arbitrator this Friday. Um, we have scheduled it one thirty, so we'll see how far we can get, um, relative to where we left off um, with the engineers at our last meeting in early June. Uh, and then finally, um, a few weeks ago, Assistant Director Buckley and I took a site visit to Rentham District Court. We met with, um, the court clerk, Pamela Gobin Fernandez, um, and took a tour of conditions of the, of the facility. Um, we had some work to do. Um, we initiated a plan of action following our meeting and just wanted to let the commissioners know that I'll read the following email from the court clerk magistrate, um, addressed to me. Good morning. It was a pleasure to be with you last week at Rentham District Court. While we've already seen some improvements with custodial staff and the condition of the courthouse. Um, I've not had the plumber yet, but it's my understanding it's already been applied to assess the employee bathrooms and bathrooms on the second floor. On behalf of the clerk's office, thank you for attention to these matters. Um, so it was important to know, commissioners, that in addition to custodial work, there was some trades work that needs to be done. As you know, that building, like many of them have aged and we plan to invest, um, more funds in plumbing, um, as well as, um, some outside work, which you'll hear on our capital request next, next week for some repointing in the front step. So, um, putting more attention into that facility to make it shine. So I want to thank the facility workers who did a great job bringing it back up. And, uh, we'll continue our visits to the other, uh, county courthouses over the next several weeks. That was all I had. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any questions of the county director? Commissioner Stady.
If I could, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So Rentham Court, as you know, the oldest court that we have, or is it Brookline?
Yeah.
Brookliners.
Yeah, I think Brookline is in the, well, no, district was, um, thirties, I think. I'll get you the dates.
I think I know that.
Sure. Of course, we know Superior is the oldest.
I mean, Rentham just seems it's, it's just a tired facility. You know, it's just.
They, they've all got similar, um, infrastructure challenges. Um, whether it's roofs, HVAC, ripped up units, windows, heating systems, cooling. those will always be perpetual issues, but you know, when you look at like Brookline, for example, there's a cupola, there's a coupon on almost all of them. Over the years, we've replaced or fixed them because they get weathered, um and I think I know Brookline's fallen apart, so we have to do that next, it's always something going on with them, Renthams was more uh a lack of um deferred maintenance going on. Uh, there was some omissions and we've caught up. Um, so um I think it'll start to shine again, it's it's a very attractive court, it's very scenic looking, so we intend to make it.
And we're going to have a capital program, Mr. Chairman, with all due respect. And we have the money that we're going to get reimbursed while we can.
Mm hmm.
I'd like to see us aggressively take a look at Rentham and Brookline and get them up to where they should be if we can, you know.
I I couldn't agree with you more, Commissioner, and there's a larger conversations beyond today's agenda, but um frankly, when I first started, I I advocated for um a requisition system um to help monitor not only what work has been done through a capital lens, but also what is planned. Um, and we need, we need skilled individuals to manage that database, uh when I was with the state uh facility managers use that as a tool, uh the state is called Kama, and you put in all of your roof work, your boiler work, um and then you add in your scheduled um uh capital needs over the next five years, and that that'll be the birth of the county's five-year capital plan, we don't have those resources right now, so we had to back away from that investment, but I do envision using that as a tool, Commissioner, to uh requisition uh work to be done, but also plan for those capital investments you're talking about, because we see eye to eye on that.
Well, the second thing, if possible, I use this very loosely, given my track record, but uh we have an advisory board meeting coming up. Uh, oh, actually, no, yeah, the advisory board meeting, seventeen, either that one or the AGI meeting, I'd like to see if I get a chance to look at the new emergency room.
Sure.
If someone could open the door if I can get in.
Absolutely.
Sure. We have a dinner at five, I believe.
Yes.
I'll try to get over, if I could get over there at four, four-thirty.